Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody for coming. Let's see Tiffany is out. Roll call. Director Schomburg.
Here.
Director Nyman.
Here.
Director.
Here.
Director Garcia is out and on vacation. And Director Kelling is here. Do we need to adjust the agenda, any?
Um, yeah. If.
We probably did bump everything down, huh?
Yeah, we should, we should bump eight down just to be safe. Yeah, eight, nine. I guess maybe ten. Let's see.
I think just eight. Why?
Well, she should be here for district banking, discussion of changes options for district banking. So, I would say, um, let's put eight and nine down to after twelve.
I second that. Or did you make that as a motion?
Uh, I moved that we place eight and nine after twelve unless, actually, let me fix it so you can see. I move that we place eight and nine after twelve or until such time that our, uh, if we have a break, then our.
Bookkeeper shows.
Bookkeeper shows up.
I second it.
One. Okay. Uh, public comments. We have no public tonight. Officers reports. President, I have none. Vice President?
Nothing.
Secretary? Treasurer?
As far as I can tell, we've made, made all of, all of our transfers, um, so we'll have to wait till Linda gets here, but then me and Director Schomburg will have to get together for a long term, of which payments for the, that need to be transferred for the, um, you know, the, the funds for what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
So we, we have some, we have some transfers set up.
For the bond payment. Thank you. That's what I was trying to.
Regular payments, but that doesn't come up until.
There's one in October?
Yeah, there's one in October and there's one in April and there's also a regular one that I set up for six months at a time, but I believe, oh, I think it's June. I need to check it.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was saying.
I think it's only until June.
We need to, to make sure so that we don't not, not make those transfers.
Yeah, I need to ask Linda, so, um, I need to look, I need to go back on the computer and check.
Okay. And member at large is right here. Board member initiatives.
Excuse me.
I have no.
Anything? Nothing. Okay. Managers report.
Alright. We had zero after hours callouts.
Woo!
That's good.
We did have one mainline leak repair, but I'm, I'm gonna have to add that after because, um, I didn't have a date for it. Um, it wasn't written on the calendar, so. Everything's going good in the field right now. We got, um, the couple of meters installed and, um, doing maintenance on vehicles and all that kinda stuff, so everything's going real good with that. Um, I can just, oh, and, uh, for the annual pants purchase this time, instead of going to Work World, cause their prices, they've gone up. I did all the, all of them on amazon.com.
A- annual what?
Pants.
Oh, okay.
For pants purchase. I did them all on amazon.com. Instead of twenty bucks a pair, I think Logan's were like twenty-two because he's.
Cause he's tall.
Really large and.
Yeah, he's a big.
But it all, it all averaged out to really close, so it was a good, good way to go with Amazon Prime, so that's how we'll do it in the future.
Okay.
Um, Amazon seems to be just awesome for all that stuff.
Well, do we do this?
W- once a year. Ten pairs, ten pairs of pants a year per.
I thought we just had done some shirts. Oh, we did shirts, okay.
We just did shirts. The shirts. And I try to do, I'm trying to get them together at the same time, but it never works out that way. When the guys start coming in, they got bleach all over their shirts and everything. I gotta get them at the time, you know, so it rotates. Um, if you don't care, we can go to six A now.
Sure.
Okay, six A, we got that meter installed. They're not hooked up yet, um, but it's installed. At least I think that you guys voted on this already when I was gone, but I have the twelve thousand dollar check from the school, but I would like to return that because the year and a half they were paying thousands of dollars every month for water. Paid for it already. They already bought into the system years ago, so, um, I would like to have you guys, um, approve that. If you want, another option would be charging, charging time and material. Um, but I think they've already paid for time and material over a year and a half, so it's up to you guys.
Yeah, well, I think last.
That was something that you sent out via email, right?
That was just, that was just, uh, polling you guys just to see if you would, you know, if, if you guys were opposed to it or for it. And now it's time to actually make the decision.
But I thought we talked about it at the last meeting. Am I crazy?
I was here at the last meeting. We may have discussed it, but I don't think we were there very long.
I don't remember discussing it at all.
I don't think it's in the minutes.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't.
I thought you brought it, I thought you said something and then we agreed that there were.
I think it was discussed, but I don't think it was.
I don't, I don't see it in the minutes here, though.
It wasn't even discussed as far as I, you know.
I mean, I.
Director.
I don't believe that we should, um, charge a meter fee to buy into the system because they'd already done that, so even though we changed the size, that was something that we recommended and it was also based on, you know, i- if we hadn't done the whole prop, um.
Eighteen?
Two eighteen.
Two eighteen. Uh, that wouldn't happen, so, yeah, I, I think, and, um, I mean, I think you, did we charge for the meter?
No, I haven't charged them anything yet.
We, we were gonna charge, with the discussion that I remember, and I don't see it on here and I don't know why I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, cause I remember it too.
I, I, I thought we had agreed that we were not going to charge them for the, the, the twelve thousand dollar fee and that we were gonna just charge them for the meter.
That's what I thought.
Well, that was, and, and that worked. That was my suggestion, but we, it was never voted on. That's what I was gonna get to, is the other alternative is charging time and material.
Yeah, that's.
It took five hours for three guys and then the, the meter, whatever that cost, I gotta get the invoice on that.
Yeah.
But we could charge them that and just call it good.
Yes, absolutely.
Cool.
Okay, I will hear a motion.
I mean, if we, because it just says, even though, I'm sorry, even though, um, even though it went up based on Prop twenty-eighteen, it says a bad precedent if we don't charge anything, I think, so I think it would be better to, to charge.
Well, plus their request, even though, even though we were for it, it was their request, so they'll be happy to pay something, watching out of everybody's time for that day.
Okay.
And then, uh, and then, and then we'll.
Well, it's not like they're buying into the system because they're already bought into the system, so this, I mean.
Go, go.
So I just, I just feel like, you know, we should charge them for the meter and time, so.
Cool.
Can we make a motion?
I move, yes, I do.
Director Schomburg.
I move that we refund the twelve thousand dollars that they paid, because I don't believe that they need to re-up into the system just because they're changing their meter size. And I believe that Johnny should calculate the, or move that Johnny should calculate the, the time and materials and that's what we charge them.
And the meter, yeah. I second that.
Call in favor?
I.
Four, zero, one.
Alright.
The only thing is to make sure, that, that is specifically for that, correct? That twelve thousand is, because their, their other stuff is up to date?
Yeah, they've been paying good and it, it, the twelve thousand came with the.
Oh, with the regular payment?
With the will serve. It's, I mean, I've been working with them and talking to everybody, so that check is for that.
Okay, yes, okay.
Cool, so I'll take that.
Time and, time and meter.
And then, uh, six B, if we can go to that.
Okay.
Um, this could be a little frustrating, so.
Data on your search.
So I told you guys last time that we couldn't do the regional project email and he says, he talked to the state and the state said that the churches, they won't fund the churches joining the project. And, um, do I remember them saying that they could? And I said, Carlos, we just had a special meeting with OCL Heimy from the state telling us we had to. That's why we're doing the outreach. So I don't know where, I don't know how that got forgotten. But I told him, look, before I do anything, I wanna know that we're gonna have some money. I'm there. He said that what he was told was that if, whatever prop it was, if it passed the election in June, then we could possibly get money in September or October. So apparently that prop passed.
Yeah.
So there's still no guarantee, so now I will proceed with doing the outreach to a couple people, but I'm waiting for a response from him telling me where that leaves us with the consolidation, because I was told we needed three public, um, entities to join.
Right.
Us, Lake of the Woods, and the third was the church.
Yeah, but we also got Bear Court.
But that's not a public. That's not what the, you know what I mean? That's not a public. That's not a mutual or a anything, so I'm waiting to find out on that, so.
How is the church a public?
Huh?
How is the church a public thing?
Well, they, they're, because they serve the public, they have a, a, um, permit like we do.
Yeah, the permits.
For serving, for providing water, so they would consolidate with us and everything would be fine, because they have to get the permit number they're required to sample the way you normally do. Private well owners aren't required to sample.
I mean, the mobile home park, because he was also a public, cause he had to, he had to, uh, sample the way we do.
Right.
Exactly, yeah, because even people that share a well, um, aren't required to ever do another back tea again.
Right.
Once they initially get the permit, so, um, I think it's still obviously gonna work out because they spent the money, but, so that's where we're at. And I'm in a holding pattern, waiting for an answer. So that's all I got for that. And then six C.
Okay, so, for my clarification, so if the mobile home park backs out.
Which they have for.
Which they have.
For Chris's, right. Okay, so then that just leaves us and Lake of the Woods for the two.
And the church.
And, and if the state says they won't fund the church, then there's no annexation, is that?
No, that's what I'm saying. We need to find out what the state's view on this, because, because Carlos didn't tell me that, because Carlos couldn't seem to remember that we even had a meeting, because.
But we have the other church.
But he said churches. They wouldn't pay for churches to join, so I don't know what's going on.
Is that because of the state versus the religion thing?
No, I, I have no idea.
I don't know, but it's considered, I don't get it, because the way they do their permit and stuff, and they're the, the, the state sat here with two people from the state and told us that we had to go back through this whole thing because they wanted to join at the last minute and we needed to give them the opportunity to do that, so how are they going back on that?
We didn't give them the opportunity and they went to the state.
Doesn't make any sense whatsoever.
So anyway, he was not saying that we were not being funded, so that's fine. The only reason we've been on a holding pattern is because I refused until I see that they had more money to, to invest any more money in walking around door to door for a project that it was stalled out. Now that we supposedly will get more money, then I will go out and do it again, cause this has been a long haul for us. So that's where.
Administrative assistance report.
Alright, it would be me.
It would be you, for Tiffany.
Tiffany, uh, submitted the CalPERS application on May twenty-third, but she's had no response yet, which we anticipated a couple months. And she completed the first submittal for the special assessments, Fund four-two-six-two-two standby fees have all been accepted. She's still waiting on the results of Fund four-two-six-two-three delinquent accounts because the county is dealing with a glitch in their system. So, um, and that's it for that part.
Okay.
Was.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, we'll talk about it.
Was that a lot easier now because all the, the stuff, stuff that entered in the system? Did we?
Uh, she seemed to do it good. I, I, I don't know. Luckily, I have a, a very, uh, adept assistant that just handles this.
Yeah, cause she just sent me the, the results.
Yeah, I do, I don't, when she's, uh, making everything, uh, you know, work glitch-free in that office, I just leave her alone.
Okay, sounds good.
So, that's good. And then I have other updates that she wrote for me on each topic that comes along.
I thought we bought last month, uh, the, um, the, the folding machine.
We did.
I don't know why it's in this one, cause you seen it and asked me about it, so I'm sure.
I remember us paying for it.
Yes.
Well, we paid for, for something from last month.
How much is it?
This one's for four hundred and six.
I missed that. Well, how did I miss that?
Is that for the folding machine?
Yeah, it says one, one Martin Yale Rapid Full Desktop Automatic Paper Folding Machine, three hundred and seventy-nine forty-seven. Plus tax is four oh six, but I remember, I remember us.
Really? Should we talk about it?
Last week.
Yeah.
Well, we can, we can ask Linda to pull the, um, last month just to look at it, to see.
Well, actually, it should be in the financials, so if we look at the financials, it should show that in the.
Well, no, because it was under the bank card.
Oh, yeah, it won't show it.
Okay, moving on. Ad hoc reports.
It's just gotten to be.
So should we switch someone? Because I don't know, it needs to happen.
I don't, I don't see me having any time free until after five o'clock.
Okay, and Johnny, you can't ever do it after five?
I mean, I usually go straight from here and go take care of my mom and I have to feed her dinner and meds and all that stuff, so it complicates it for me. I mean, if I have to, I, I will, but.
Are you okay switching with someone else?
Yeah.
Okay. What are you, your vice chair right now? Your vice chair, right? I mean, vice president.
Pres- vice president.
Um, Brama, um, you're two.
I'm, I'm willing.
Okay, or, or Terry, I don't, I don't think Jerry wanted to do it.
No, he didn't.
So it just, it just has to.
Plus, he's not gonna be here till next month.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's us going over this, making our recommendations. You guys wanted me to be a part of because I've done it a couple times.
One thing I can do, sorry to interrupt, one thing I can do is I could go over and make my suggestions and make myself available, obviously, if the ad hoc wants to call me, because when I'm cooking my mom's dinner, doing her meds or whatever, I'm, I'm available by phone, so.
It's better with.
Yeah, but we, we're almost primarily done, I would think, because we, we already, we already did a lot of.
I think an hour.
No, we didn't do it at all this year, this is this year. The last, we did it last year, Brama, it's been that long.
But it's only gonna be an hour, it's only an hour or two, it's only an hour or two going over it.
Alright, I surrender.
It's not that bad, it's just that the back and forth really helps, because if someone has an idea and is able to justify it or, it, it helps having the, the interaction, I think, not on the phone. Um, I.
You wanna do it? Do you have, are you feeling up to it?
Yes, I can do it.
Don't sound so happy about it.
Can we set a date?
You're the treasurer. Yes, you like money.
Well, he didn't, he, he felt he needed to get his health and, and check in.
Yeah, cause he had a surgery.
But, but I, I, I'm, I, I can do it. Just let me know when you wanna do this.
I could do next Thursday, the twenty-first.
Okay, hold on just a second.
In the daytime.
Okay, um.
Or I could actually do, I guess, two, uh, no, two, yeah, I could do Tuesday also, I definitely cannot do Wednesday.
Well, I won't be up, back up here until probably noon on Tuesday, on the twenty-first.
That would be okay, cause I have that stuff in the morning.
So what, you want me, like, one o'clock?
Uh, what, would you wanna do the nineteenth?
The nineteenth, we could do one o'clock.
Yeah, nineteen works better for me.
Okay.
Okay, one o'clock.
Okay, we just need to be flexible, um, on, I may have to just go get someone a, a ride down the street, cause I'm taking to work, but that would be it. So I just never know what, when that is.
So that's, I'm sorry, that was the, what?
Tuesday, the nineteenth at one o'clock.
At one o'clock. Cause I'm off the hill in the morning and then I'll be back before noon at the doctor's appointment.
Okay, and Sigma.
So you're going as well to, to, tomorrow evening?
Yes.
Okay, so.
What is a two compound?
Oh, what?
A two compound.
Two compound. Well, let's, let's do that one.
Two inch compound here. That's, that's the price. How much is that price?
Uh, two thousand one hundred and forty-eight twenty-seven.
Okay, two thousand, how much?
Two thousand one hundred and forty-eight and twenty cents.
We're out of order.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, uh, Sigma, uh, Terry, Director Kelling and my son are companies for a discussion, possibly not, um, per se Sigma, but, um, discussing the, uh.
Water issues of the mountain communities.
Yeah, so it's, it's, but they're also discussing the possibility of if, of LeBeck's, um.
Their election?
No, the, the.
Better, um, JPA, JPIA, J.
No, the, oh my goodness, my brain's not working. It's part of Sigma, but anyway, the.
You're talking about the, the, the agreement between LeBeck and T-Hom. Yeah, it's a, it's a.
But be that, there's the bigger picture, which I can't think of the acronym for right now, cause I'm not doing good. But, um, anyway, so that's, that's what they're talking about. They're talking about the possibility of all the water companies interacting on that stuff and possibly, you know.
Right, just so you guys know, uh, me and two of the, there's the water companies discuss this and think, say, we're already doing that, as far as that goes. You guys getting together and talking is good, but if we share, every month now, we share water, um, data with everybody. We do emails, um, uh, um, what's his name? M- Milky?
Yeah, but this is a formal.
Austin is doing the spreadsheet, the, the Excel.
That's part, that's part of.
Just so you know, so we guys know, you guys, so we're already sharing that data, so we'll know. That's why we, we probably should start selling.
And is the other person doing it?
Uh, I believe, uh, well, LeBeck is for sure.
So it's LeBeck, um.
And I think, even Pine Mountain, um, I, I'm not doing that part, I just submit my data. Um, but I'll look on and see how, how many people are joining, but we can also do well sounding and that would be right along with that, too.
Doesn't Austin work for Canyon Pine Water?
Canyon Pines, yeah.
I need to call you back.
Okay.
Okay, bye.
Um, I believe we, what, the way Bill described it is he wanted us to get together and figure out how we were going to try and, um.
The GSA or A.
Yeah, GSA, I guess, for, but to, 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 how we could sustain our underwater. Um, and so I think that's what, you know, he was wanting, he was wanting ideas.
My problem with that is, and like I told Bill, they, right off the bat, jumped in the bed with Town Ranch, with their thing. They're already doing it. So, by, so we're, I mean, no, they have, they agreed to it, so now, so now with us going in with them, now in essence, we're sharing all of our stuff, which is all public information anyway, we're sharing all our stuff with T-Hom. And right now, I don't know if you've read the newspaper, but now there's a big deal in.
Oh, well, there.
With Orman and Centennial Project.
There has been. There has been.
Well, I know, but.
That's been going on for several years, which I've been aware of.
But anyway, so, I don't know how good it's gonna do. I mean, I think that everybody needs to just keep good track of their well sounding and their, their water use and everything, cause that's gonna come up down the road.
I think we definitely need to just be a part of and know what's going on, so for anything, so, well, we're definitely gonna go as part of the ad hoc. And we're not gonna take any information, we're just gonna receive information and give our two cents for now.
Yes, and, um, and I went to that meeting where the, the county, LA County was out and they recorded all of the, maybe it was Kern, I don't know, but there was a county recorder there and she recorded the whole meeting. And, um, I specifically asked T-Hom why we weren't asked, because since we were in adjoining, um, basin and they said that we weren't. And so I asked the county water people to explain all of this and they did, and because LeBeck is in.
They're in the same basin, we're in, we're in.
Or in a ti- or different basin, but we, the way the water, the state water agency explained it, the lady there, she said T-Hom and LeBeck. And she was trying to, the, the way I looked at it, she was trying to, to divide that basin. And T-Hom is over here, LeBeck is here, and then we're over here, so we're actually next to LeBeck. We aren't, we don't have anything to do with T-Hom because we're too far away. Well, I don't see how water in a pool knows that it's supposed to stay in the three foot versus the six foot.
Just because it's not a pool, see, and that's, that's where everybody's, it, it's not like an underground lake. That's not the way water works and we're upstream. Granted, like Lisa said, if they super pumped, it may cause our water to flow faster down, but with our Garlock crossing and having that dam or slowage down there at well five, I'm not that concerned with it, as long as look back into home, get in and do their study correctly, because if they start over pumping what they're pumping now, then they violate their, what, what they, their agreement with the state.
Right.
If they were above us, they would be of paramount importance, because now they're gonna take water flowing to us.
Right.
But people below us, isn't gonna affect us that much. Unless they start super pumping.
Yeah, if they're pumping a huge event, it could though.
It couldn't.
So we do have to keep an eye on it and we do have.
But that's why we're not part of it, though.
Right, we are possibly affected because we're updraft or a little bit.
And it's good we're not part of it. The good thing is, because it would've cost a bunch of money and we would've been working with them, which kinda makes it to where they could use some of our water. As it is, we just have to make sure that we keep tabs on our water levels and everything, because if it starts affecting us, then we would have to go and petition and say, look, to the state, they're over pumping and it's affecting us.
And that's not what they had in their agreement.
Agreement, yeah. So.
Complicated.
So anyway, back, we, Lisa and I will attend this meeting and we will see where it goes and report back. And.
Man, it's a plus. Anytime the water companies are all communicating up here, it's probably a plus.
I would hope.
Can I, um, ask you to, uh, uh, go back to, uh, number six real quick?
Managers report?
Yeah, can we do that?
Okay.
Alright, um, I went ahead and did this on my own, but I, I emailed with Bark. I told you guys about the shredding. The way it works is they bring you a, uh, container, um, it's twenty-five bucks per dump. They're up there about every six weeks. I ordered the twenty-five dollar one, see how that works. But you don't pay anything, you don't pay anything upfront, you don't pay anything for the container. They bring it and you, we put all our shreddables in it and it's locked, and then when we need it, the next time they're up here on the hill, they come and they take that one out and bring a new one in, and then they take it down and shred it. So for twenty-five bucks for a big container of shreddables, I felt that was very fair, so I told them to, when they could, to bring us one. Yeah.
And that, we can do staples and everything with that, right?
Everything, yeah. Yeah, so it'll work out really well for our shreddables, so, cause I don't anticipate having to empty it very often at all, cause like, uh, they're both, they're kinda trash bins at our house, if it's anything like that, um, it'd take a long time to fill that up, but you don't throw away that much, so. Sorry, I forgot to mention that earlier.
And, and they recycle it? And so they, they must, cause they.
I don't know, but they're the highest rated and certified in Kern County, apparently, for what they do and.
Great, and they help people.
And they help people, so it's a win-win and, uh, like I said, Ty from Elton Pharmacy has used them for, however long, for all three of his pharmacies, so, um, that's where I got the idea from.
That's a good sign, cause their information's, socials and everything.
He said there's a phenomenal amount that a pharmacy has to shred.
Yeah, that's, that's huge.
And it's really secure and so that's good, so.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna move eight and nine, okay, ten. Uh, discussion vote on the dump truck.
Okay, um. Okay, um, I've done exhaustive research. And the problem is, is that when I do find a good deal.
It's gone.
It's gone by the time we have it coordinated. Um, this is a kind of a good example. This is a the state contract vendor in Sacramento that we always get these. There's a truck exactly like we want, that when this was printed, which I don't know when it came out, uh forty-nine, nine sixty-four for the chassis um itself. And then um we can get a price from them on the dump, but I know from that other quote, it's like fifteen thousand for a for a dump bed. But unless you guys decide, you know, that you wanna approve for sixty-five thousand or seventy or something and then trust me to get the best deal like normal, um I really can't, um when I find these deals, I can't take them up on it. I can't say, hold it for me for three weeks, so.
That's new, right?
This came uh last week, I believe, so.
No, it means a new chassis.
Yeah, brand new.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and what size, what size?
It's an F six fifty. It's.
Oh yeah, those are big.
Yeah, and it's a s- six-speed automatic tranny and a diesel engine. It's not a four by four, but that's fine. And it's got everything that we want, um but I mean.
We don't need a four by four?
No, I mean, that was something that we wanted to get when we were, for one thing, when I was looking for a smaller dump truck. But since the leak truck started uh, since that became such an issue, we have to be able to tow that portable generator, and that's the only thing that'll tow it is our dump truck. So we just gotta get one that's strong. It's got a towing capacity, so.
But why wouldn't we need a four by four?
Well, we've never had a four by four. It just was hopeful that on some streets like North End, we could do it. We could get the four by four, but the four by four costs a lot more money.
But if we're towing something, it makes it heavy enough that you can usually like, right?
Then we're going from sixty-five thousand approximately to maybe as much as eighty-five thousand for the four by four.
Yeah.
Cause they're always rear wheel drive, so if you look, if you're loaded in the back, it's got more traction. If you're not loaded in the back, then.
And there do lease and, you know, so there's, you know, four tires on the back and all that stuff, but um.
So it might probably have enough traction, but.
So however you guys wanna handle it, but I think we just need a dollar amount and to say, used or new and uh make that approval. And then if you guys approve that, then I would just have to get Linda to, you guys would have to vote on who's gonna sign it. And I would have to get Linda to cut the check and bring it to you when I find a deal.
Director Schumberg.
Um, I move that we allow Johnny to buy a dump truck with a maximum price of seventy-five thousand. Um, and that he just find three signers, because it needs to be signed by three of the directors. Any of the three that he can find when he has that check. Um, when he, when he, if he finds something and needs to pay my check, and that that money because I'm a little worried about a chunk like that coming out, that that money come out of the um general fund and that we replace it once we, once we purchase, we can put money back in, even if we have to put it in twice. Cause I I don't want, I don't think I want to take a seventy-five thousand dollar chunk out of the the uh reserve, I mean, out of the uh not reserve, my brain.
Revenue fund.
Revenue fund, operating revenue fund. So if it comes out of the general, the general is a um what we had before, pre the USDA. It's it's sort of like a savings account that we have. It's just, they, it it's not included in our oper- operating revenue, because if we were to go bankrupt, the USDA could take our operating revenue, but they wouldn't be able to touch the general, because that was before we overtook the law of the bonds.
So we'll take, we'll we'll.
We have that.
We'll take it out of our revenue fund?
No, I'm suggesting, I'm sorry, so out of the general fund for Johnny, that he have a a limit of seventy-five thousand dollars to purchase.
For a new one.
A new dump truck with all the appropriate things that we need and the bed, uh or the dump bed. Um, so that would be the chassis, a separate chassis and dump bed. And.
Totalling seventy-five.
Totalling up to seventy-five thousand to come out of the general fund. I think I said that already, but.
Yeah.
And then we would repay it from the operating fund.
Yeah.
Okay, I second that motion.
Okay, so now we can just discuss it if we vote on, or we don't need to vote on it, we just need to just.
I don't think Terry's been here with a big uh purchase like this, but um when I ask for this, it's, I always get the best deal. It's.
Well, I've seen that in the past.
Oh, you just wanna make sure you knew that. I'm not gonna spend it just because you authorize up to seventy-five thousand, it's.
Yeah, well, you did that with the three trucks.
That'll be a penny pincher for sure, but.
Yes.
So, so what what we're actually doing is you're buying a a truck and then a a chassis and then having the dump bed put on and installed, and it'll be a total cost.
Seventy-five dollars.
Not more than, yeah, less than seventy-five.
Cause if I can't get it for that, I'm not doing it.
Right.
So, the goal is, if these people, to give us the state funding, can add the chassis, that it's a good deal. I mean, add the dump bed.
Right.
Then I'll just go with them and have them do that.
Right.
If not, I'll be buying the chassis from here and taking it to a truck body place and s- s- you know, there would be a separate check.
Right.
Still not over exceeding the limit.
Right.
To get the dump bed put on.
Yeah, and we just need to keep that, so we make sure we repay the.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Uh, what, quick question too, and that would be a manual dump bed, or, because we had talked about the difference between the.
I believe that we still would go with the PTO, which is right off the motor of the truck.
Okay.
But um it's gonna depend on cost and uh prove prove to me that electric.
It's gonna be on the handle.
Is work good, works good too, so um knowing, you know, what I'm doing, I will be going and and researching more, talking to people. Cause I've, I've spent multiple days already myself, when I go somewhere um with family or something, I stop and I look at trucks and, you know, try to find a good deal.
Yeah.
On this stuff. And um, but I I'm gonna need to see it in action. You know, dump dump, you know, I wanna see the truck loaded.
Yeah.
See how it dumps, but so I'll get the best thing we can.
And the the reason I'm taking it out of the general fund is I explained, so it's it's just a safer way so that if for any reason we're a little bit low on the operating revenue, which I don't think we will. We've been doing okay, but if there's some massive, well, especially if it happens around the time of the bond payments, then we definitely would need to take that out of another place, otherwise we'll, we won't have enough to pay the bond, so um the uh, or at least the interest, um so yeah, that's why. And then we can pay back the uh if we need to pay it back to the general, well, we will pay it back to the general fund, but if we need to do it in more than one payment, I'd be up there wherever we can.
Okay. All in favor of signing?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carried dump truck. Four zero one. Okay.
Just how much is in the general right now, it's um.
Around.
Two hundred and nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah, two nineteen, okay. Um, discussion and vote on signed district requests for col- consolidation election services.
Okay, Tiffany has an update for that, or has some. Says the board members out for reelection in November are Director Schumberg, Director Gibson and Director Kelling. Nomination form be filled out by these three directors in person at the election office in Vickersville on Truckston Boulevard. The timeframe to do so, to do that is from July sixteenth through August tenth. Will be asked to fill out a new Form seven hundred. She has a form that needs to be signed by Director Kelling, which she already did, and uh, so that's her update, so don't forget.
July sixteenth through August what?
August tenth, it says.
So you just go down to the office?
We do not want any of you to not make the time for.
I have a question. Is there a term limit on um? Do I ever turn out? It's like Congress, you're gonna be there forever?
Forever.
Yeah, we have no term limits.
It's government.
I mean, if we did, it would be in the.
It would be in the bylaws, we don't.
And they would tell you, but I mean, if there is a law about it, the election office would say, no, you can't do that.
Right.
I don't know how many times I've been.
Don't try to squeak out of it, you are, you can't.
You're not going anywhere, Mr. Schumberg.
It's terrible when you change.
We need you in this community.
We should try to go down there together, the three of us.
Yeah, we can do that. That's what we did last time, you and I went. That was easier.
It is.
And we should take a copy of, because we always fill it out. We should have taken a copy of the last one. Yeah, that you have to do a seven hundred form there and you have to do their little fill out thing and one of them you're allowed to put, not have to put your home address, but one of them you have to put your home address, because constituents need to know that you live in the district, so copies from Tiffany and make sure we can just copy off that. I remember we were sitting there going, oh, like I forget every year.
Okay. So the three of us will have to figure out, but tell me.
I mean, I didn't care at the time, but now I kinda do, because there's that one member of the public that was really wanted to know where I lived.
Mm-hmm.
And that made me very nervous.
Oh, and there's something in your packet too that has to do with it, so don't forget to look at that.
I don't know, we need to, we might wanna ask Ernest about if there's somebody to just certify that we live here without having to give our actual, I don't know if that's possible to do.
Yeah, cause a P O box wouldn't.
No, certify, a P O box, well, P O box does certify it now, because they require a bill from your address.
That's true.
But I don't know if it certifies it with the Kern County elections. Is there a way we could talk to Ernest about that, because it's it's actually like a safety question. It's become a safe, a security issue with.
And that is what?
Um, we have a member of the public who we've had some harassment and um our addresses go in.
I would think that you ought to be able to just prove it by.
You can't, because last time, so I think Ernest, there may be something special we have to do to certify where we live or something, but I know that they demanded that we put our home address. So that could be, especially if that person's.
If that becomes public information, I mean, if that's the reason.
I mean, it already is, and, cause you've put it before, but oh, you lived at a different address.
But I put my P O box, not my, you know. That person wanted, they were upset, because they went down there and tried to get my my personal address.
To the county?
Yeah.
And normally they make you give your actual home address, just like, just like elections. You have to give your home address. You can't give the P O box.
So if that's the case, so that means anybody selected in office, we can just go down and ask for their address?
Yeah.
Like governors and.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody.
Yeah, that's why people.
A lot of people find out.
That's how they find out, huh?
And you also see people that get shot, like that one guy in Colorado, so.
Okay, so what I'll do is I will send an email to Ernest and include all of you.
Yeah, and just say, is there anything besides?
Just don't reply.
Yes.
Address that can be used. Is there some way to certify a P O box and and just tell them in light of the fact that we're getting harassed by a particular individual?
But I do believe that you each could question Ernest if you have a question. You could question him specifically about your own concern, but you cannot respond to anything any other board members brought up in that email. So if we're talking about this and you wanna ask Ernest something, you could ask him, but then Brahman can't comment on your, what you asked.
But you shouldn't reply all, you should just reply to Ernest.
Yeah.
You don't reply to all. You gotta make sure when you do your reply that it's just to Ernest.
But I think it probably affects all of us, so it's something that we should ask as a group.
Well, the initial question, but I'm saying if he had something personal, I mean, she shouldn't be replying and so, because.
Yeah, correct. Is there, is there actually a vote on this? Do we actually have to vote? I thought we voted to do consol- do we have to vote every time to consolidate the election services?
I have no idea.
Oh, was there, was there something in our packet here? Cause I didn't look at.
I know we voted last time.
Oh, there it is. Well, was it stay on the agenda there?
Yeah.
So my special vote signed, I mean, Terry signed it, but we probably need to vote on it.
Do you need that back?
Um, let me just look at this quickly. Because it's a reimbursement, a ca- there's a cost, and it's a fairly substantial cost to do this every time.
That's why we wanna consolidate.
Well, no, the consolidating is the cost. They they charge to, for us to do that, but it's much easier. Because if you don't consolidate and put it on the main ballot, it can be really messy and difficult too. You have to go all the, jump through all these hoops. So they, for the money we give them, they do all the stuff where it says the county election official will. Like they do all that so that you don't have to. This is new. They started doing it a few years back. They didn't used to charge us for it, but they do now.
Well, it's our way of giving tax money about.
I didn't realize we needed to prepare a resolution. I don't recall doing that. We need to make sure that Tiffany sees that part. Johnny, I'm sure she already has, but prepare a resolution calling for the election on special measures and submit. Oh, we don't have special measures.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, I say we need to vote on it every time.
Okay.
Director Schumberg.
So I move that we uh allow November sixth, twenty eighteen election.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Okay, it's already.
Four zero one. Okay, discussion and vote on the Brown App policy.
Okay, in your packet, it looks like there's a draft to be approved. And so you don't have to approve that, but it says, uh, this is the first policy that needs to be adopted as part of the transparency certification I spoke about last month. There are a few more policies the board will need to adopt at future meetings. This policy came from a template provided by the California Special District Association and has been vetted and used by multiple districts.
Fourteen business day?
Yeah, but we usually do it uh at the meeting, so it's, that's someone from the public. Because someone wanted to put something on the agenda, or if a board member not in a meeting wanted to add something to the agenda, they uh they have to do it fourteen business days prior.
But if we were in the meeting, we can.
No, it doesn't talk about the meeting. It's saying a request to add something to the agenda. We actually have it as as an agenda item on our previous meeting, so that's okay. This is if it's separate from the meeting. I didn't know you could limit the time devoted to a public request issue. That's interesting.
So this is if they wanted some, if the public wanted something, add it to the, but haven't, haven't we before, like a week before, added stuff to the agenda? Are you saying that we have to put something in writing now?
No, because, see, here's the thing. Anytime I wanna add something to the agenda, because it's district business, that's what it's saying, I have the discretion of that. Anytime I wanna add something to the thing, so if you guys want something, you just say, you know, Johnny, I need you on the agenda, okay.
Yeah.
And then we just add it.
Right.
Cause I could add it all the way.
So if we were at odds, basically, I'd have to put it fourteen days ahead.
I'm a smart man. We're not gonna be at odds like that, I guarantee you that.
Okay, well, I'm just, you know.
We all work well together here.
Thank God, okay.
The general manager should be the sole judge of whether the public request is or is not a matter directly related to di- district business. The public member requesting the agenda item may appeal the general manager's decision at the next regular board meeting. Any director may request that the item be placed on the agenda of the board's next regular meeting.
Yeah.
So basically, if you denied something, they could come to the meeting and.
They could, yeah.
And then say, hey, I I want this on the agenda, then we would make a decision as a board whether we would.
Which is good, because it's times people have asked me to put something on the agenda that had nothing to do with us.
Yeah.
And it's a director too, it has to be fourteen days, cause up above that says, any director may request any item to be placed on the agenda by. By contacting the clerk at least fourteen business days prior to the day of the meeting.
So anything after that, you would have to just have me add it. Cause I've asked Tiffany about that. I can add anything I need to be to the agenda.
Do we wanna read this or?
I don't know if you can, Johnny. She said that?
Yeah, we've been doing it for the last three years and she's the Brown.
But this is the Brown Act.
But there's things that come up all the time that we don't have two weeks notice. That's why the general manager can.
Yeah, if it's, but that's, that's, you know.
If it's something that I could have foreseen three months ahead of time, then I should be having it on the agenda prior to that, but.
So this isn't just the Brown Act, this is also our um.
So this is, this is our draft.
Our bylaws too.
Saying that we're in compliance.
Yeah.
We, we have to approve that, we have to approve as a board that we're in compliance with the rules of what's in this draft.
Yeah, which we are.
Do we wanna read through it to make sure that there's nothing weird in here?
When was the last time you found something without doing that?
Yeah.
Who wants to read?
Okay, I'll start. Draft to be approved, Brown Act compliance policy. Agendas, the administrative assistant clerk of the board, board clerk, in cooperation with the Fr- Fraser Park Public Utility District Board of Directors Chair. And general managers shall prepare an agenda for each regular and special meeting of the board in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act. Government Code Section five four nine fifty. Any director may request any item to be placed on the agenda by contacting the clerk at least fourteen business days prior to the date of the meeting. Any member of the public may request that a matter directly rated, related to district business be placed on the agenda. Of a regularly scheduled board meeting that's subject to the following conditions. One. The request must be in writing and be submitted to the general manager together with supporting documents and information, if any, at least fourteen business days. Prior to the day of the meeting. Two, the G- uh, general manager shall be the sole judge of whether the public request is or is not a matter directly related to that district business. The public member requesting the agenda item may appeal the general manager's decision at the next regular board meeting. Any director may request that the item be placed on the agenda of the board's next regular meeting. Three, no matter which is legally a proper subject for consideration by the board in closed section will be accepted under this policy. Four.
What am I?
No matter which is legally a proper subject for consideration. By the board in closed session will be accepted under this p- policy.
That's a weird sentence. Uh, which is legally approach. I don't understand that. Uh, that's a weird sentence. It doesn't make sense to me.
Oh, we don't have Tiffany here to, this is just a draft.
Yeah, can we um, I would just, I mean, we can approve it in um. In principle, but ask her, I think, a couple of questions when she's.
Which got number?
Number three.
Number three.
It's kinda strange.
Matter which is legally a proper subject for consideration by the board in closed session will be accepted. Under this policy.
So we'll ask her to clarify that.
Yeah, cause yeah, I don't understand. It, it's kinda, I kinda understand, but I don't. I mean, it sounds like she's saying. A matter that, that.
Is not legally a proper.
Which is legally proper for a closed section. Uh, for a closed session will be accepted under the policy.
No matter which is legally a proper subject for consideration by the board in closed session. Will be accepted.
Under this.
I think it's saying that if it's a matter that has to be in a closed session. A board member or somebody can't request it to be.
That's what I take it to mean too, now that you said.
Can't submit it to be for a regular meeting, if it's a legally closed session.
Before, so then how does that gets, that only gets submitted from here, from a meeting?
Well, I mean, it sounds like you use this policy, which means you, you put it, you either do it from the board or you do it fourteen days prior to, to the board meeting.
Did it get put on the next regular meeting or did it get put in a closed session?
But closed sessions are on the regular meetings, so that's why I'm confused about this. Closed sessions are a part of our regular meetings. They just, we stop and go into closed sessions, so it still goes on the agenda. For that regular meeting. We don't do a whole separate meeting for closed sessions.
I think we just need clarification of the sentence. I think what she's saying is, is that we use this policy. Uh, for any matter that's for our consideration, we use the same policy. In other words, uh, in other words, either we, we. If we know at the time of our board meeting when we close, we say next month, which we usually won't know. But if Johnny knows that there's a closed session, he can put it on, or we have to in writing say, we want this matter.
I, I think what it means is if it's supposed to go into closed session. It will not be accepted as a regular item on the agenda. It will only be accepted.
That's what I thought I was saying.
That's what it is saying.
And I believe that that is what.
But, but it's.
Okay, we need to get clarification on this.
And just so you know, she, that's why I think she said that this is not an all inclusive.
Right.
Policy to this. There's more that you guys are gonna have to approve, so there's probably gonna be.
Right, cause it doesn't say how it is accepted.
To this, that you were in the future gonna have to approve.
So basically it's just saying, so it's probably fine. Basically it's just saying that if it's a matter. That you recognize or that she recognizes as something that should be in closed session and not on the regular agenda, it will not be accepted under this.
Exactly, yeah. So let's leave it.
So it's fine. I mean, it's just that I would like to know though, I'd like clarification how we put that on then.
Did you get that Tiffany? There we go.
Okay.
Four, the board may place limitations on the total time to be devoted to, to a public request issue at any meeting. And may limit the time allowed for any one person to speak on the issue at the meeting. Okay. This policy does not prevent the board from receiving public comments at regular and special meetings of the board. On matters which are not on the agenda that a member of the public may wish to bring before the board. However, um, and shouldn't how- however be a colon mark? Is it?
No.
No? Okay, cause, okay. Um, the board shall not discuss or take action on such matters at that meeting. Other than providing brief general directions to staff regarding the matter if appropriate. At least seventy-two hours prior to the time of all regular meetings and agenda which includes. But is not limited to all matters on which there may be discussion and or action by the board. Shall be posted in a place that is freely accessible to the members of the public. California Government Code five four nine five four point two, uh, parentheses A, parentheses one, period. If the district maintains a website, the agenda will be posted on the website for public information at the same time. All information made available to the board, except confidential information allowed by state law per legal council authority. Shall be available for public review prior to the board meeting. The agenda for a special meeting shall be posted at least twenty-four hours. Before the meeting in the same location as the regular meeting agendas, California Code Section five four nine five six. The general manager and or the board clerk of the meetings described herein shall determine. The order in which the agenda items shall be considered for discussion and or action by the board. Subject to reordering of the agenda by the board at the meeting, meetings. One, regular meetings of the district board of directors shall be held on the second and fourth Thursday of each calendar month at six P M. In the district office boardroom. Two.
So, so one thing in regard to that. Um, because regular meetings are on here, we actually have a meeting, but it's not.
I think she did, and she posted it and everything like, you're supposed to.
She did post it and then we just didn't show up for it?
Yeah.
Okay, as long as she posted it, it was done correctly.
Oh, yeah.
What meeting are you talking about?
We didn't do a, a second meeting of the month.
Oh.
Because there was nothing to do.
There was nothing to do, but you would still have to post an agenda. I mean, normally we have, you can't just cancel a meeting.
She posted the agenda and she posted it on the website, I believe, and it said. That it was, you know.
It was canceled, yeah.
And why, I believe.
But I don't think you can't, yeah, that's something to talk about, cause I don't know that you can just say it's canceled.
Well. Again, I don't know the verbiage.
She probably did it correctly, cause she's done it before.
She's turned out to be the, you know.
The expert on that, yeah.
Stuff, so.
Two, special meetings of the board may be called by the board chair. Or by a majority of the board by delivering written notice to each member of the legislative body and to each local newspaper. Of general circulation, radio or television stations requesting notice in writing and posting a notice on the district's website. A notice shall be delivered personally or by any other means at least twenty-four hours before the time of the meeting as specified in the notice. The call and notice shall specify the time and place of special meetings in the business to be transact- transacted. Or discussed. No other business shall be considered by the board at these meetings. Three, emergency meetings. In the event of an emergency situation involving matters upon which prompt action is necessary due to disruption. Or threatens disrupt, disruption of public facilities. The board may hold an emergency special meeting without complying with the twenty-four hour notice. An emergency situation means a crippling disaster which severely impairs public health, safety or both as determined by the board chair. Or a majority of the board, newspapers of general circulation in the district. Radio and television stations which have requested notice of the special meetings shall be notified by at least one. Hour prior to the emergency meeting. In the event that the telephone services are not functioning, the notice requirement of one hour is waived. But the board or its designated shall notify such newspapers or radio stations or television stations of the fact of the. Holding the emergency special meeting and of any action taken by the board as soon a- after the meeting is possible. Four, closed sessions may be held during an emergency meeting. By a unanimous vote of the members present and all other rules governing special meetings shall be observed with the exception of the twenty-four hour notice. The minutes of the emergency meeting, a list of the persons the board or designated notified or attempted to notify a copy of the roll call votes. And any actions taken at such meeting shall be posted for a minimum of ten days in the district. Offices soon a- after the meeting is possible. Five, adjourned meetings. A majority vote by the board of directors may terminate any board meeting at any place in the agenda and adjourn. To any time and place specified in the order of the adjournment. Except that if no directors are present at any regular or adjourned, regular meeting. The general manager may declare the meeting adjourned to a state, stated time and place. And he or she shall cause a written notice of adjournment to be given. Six, standing commitment meetings. The meetings of standing committees irrespective of their composition which have a continued subject matter jurisdiction or a meeting. Schedule fixed by charter, ordinance, resolution or formal action of a legislative body are subject to the notice and open. Meeting provision of the Brown Act. Uh, the board clerk shall ensure that all required and appropriate information is available for audience at meetings of board directors. And the physical facilities for seminars are functional and appropriate for all persons. Um, on six, what is a standing committee meeting?
It's an ad hoc or a standing committee. But there used to be, and I don't know if this changed, it used to be if there were under. Three members that you didn't um. Have to post it because it's just you were investigating, you weren't voting and, and we don't do any voting.
Well, we don't do any decisions in the committee. We bring it to the board.
Right, so I'm pretty sure that we don't have to um.
Cause you don't have a quorum, right?
Because we don't, we don't have a quorum, you know.
Yeah, you don't have a quorum.
And we're not making any decisions.
Any decisions, we're just investigating and then.
But if, if a standing committee is making, but we need to double check that and make sure that's still correct.
But it's not a meeting unless you have three people.
Uh, theoretically, yeah, we would have to have three people to actually have.
And ad hocks need three people still.
Right.
We're good.
Okay.
Not ours.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I move that we um adopt the draft of the Brown Act compliance policy. Uh, look for any typos or other errors that may need to be corrected before we put it out as a final policy.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me just spread the web.
Thanks. You mean you want me to wake up?
Okay. Do you wanna take a brief recess? Okay.
And before I forget, can I get a copy of that uh receipt for that um, two inch compound meters thrown?
Sure.
Go down and submit that one to the school.
You're up Linda.
Thank you.
Um.
I need to.
Oh, you wanna take a brief, brief recess?
Just a, just a bathroom.
Five minute recess.
I.
I'll make a motion and we take a break?
Then we take, yes. A, a five, five minute recess.
Okay.
We might as well take our ten minute.
Okay, ten minute recess.
Great.
Do I?
All in favor? Aye.
No.
Okay, back in session at uh seven twenty?
Seven twenty one.
Seven twenty one.
Uh the total cash available is, or total cash, not available because we can't spend it all. The total cash is one million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and two cents. The operating account is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three ninety-three point two five.
Okay, now, I had one question. Under, so under the Prop two eighteen, we're supposed to keep a minimum of a hundred and, was it a hundred and twenty-three thousand in this account?
In the emergency?
No, in the operating, the revenue operating fund. I thought we were supposed to keep a minimum amount in the operating fund.
I don't remember.
Oh, okay. Now, this is after our checks are paid, or?
No, these checks were cut this month. This is at the balance as of May thirty-one.
As of May thirty-one.
Can you repeat that again, the balance? I'm sorry.
Um, in the operating account, two five nine, three nine three point two five.
And what was your issue?
Oh, no, I don't have an issue. I just was, I was thinking that we, was wondering how much, because us having that much cash, I think we should make another transfer to the uh, to the contingency fund.
We can't add up to contingency to emergency.
To, I mean, to the emergency reserve.
Well, we just cut like a hundred, about what?
A hundred thousand.
Seventy thousand in checks.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't do it yet.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We, we had discussed prior to do it every six months in April and October.
Well, that's why I was saying, I thought we were, we're trying to keep over a hundred thousand in the operating fund, is what I was.
Over.
Well, we have, we're, we're fine.
Yeah, yeah.
But we just did a hundred thousand into emergency fund in April.
Right, right.
And then I have it marked to do it again in October.
Yes.
After, you know.
After our, after we do our uh, our payments.
Correct.
Yes.
Director Schumberg.
Quick question on the payments. I can't remember. I need to go on the banking and look what I set up, but didn't I set it up to go through June for some reason? Or did I set it up for the whole year? Did you calculate it for the whole year?
The whole year.
Oh, okay.
We haven't gotten there yet. Okay, go ahead, Linda, sorry.
Okay, um, we're still not getting the statements for the construction account. And I had trouble logging on to the bank again. But finally I did. I got on. I don't know why it kept saying it was, but finally it let me in. Um, and two of our accounts are not showing up online. When I look at the list of accounts, the emergency fund and the FPPUD slash Lake of the Woods planning account, those two accounts are not listed on, at least on mine. It may be on yours, but when I go in, it's not showing that I.
Well, the emergency reserve I saw on there.
So you, you need to put that I can see that. Cause it's not, those two accounts aren't showing up when I can, that I can see it.
Okay, I know what's happening.
Okay.
Um, because what happens is that you're probably locked out because you have to do, when that got added, I forgot to add it on yours. And I probably forgot to add it on any, the only reason we could see it is because we're both admin.
Oh, okay, alright.
And that makes total sense to me. So anyway, the two that I couldn't see, and I don't know about anybody else that has access, is the emergency fund and the planning fund.
Yeah, well, I, I, I checked them all, and I, I know that the money is all there. I'm a little diligent on that.
Also, we still have a credit balance with B line of eight hundred and forty-two eighty-one. That's been a credit balance since December, so um, I don't know when.
What are we talking about?
I'm confused that they haven't issued us a check, because here's what companies don't go that long.
Well, I just, well, I just don't want to buy something we don't need just for the sake of spending the money.
No, I know, so we could just, you know.
I mean, I could order a pump or something that it will use, if that's an issue.
It's fine as long as we track it. It's a lot of times they'll refund stuff before.
Most companies will refund it too if you haven't used it up in a couple of months, but I just don't, I just want to make sure we don't forget about it.
And so the, and the payment fund this month was to zero because we made our payment in April of the, of the interest payment. It was the forty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, we did all that in April.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then um, the uh, I, postal service, I don't know if Johnny told you, they are not giving us our receipts anymore. Johnny's gonna figure out how we can get it online.
The issue is, when I try to log, they say that they've decided that they're not giving receipts anytime we want a balance. Or we want, when we go in there and request it, but as far as getting one delivered, they're not doing that anymore. You gotta log in. When I log in, or I try to log in, it says that it's already, there's already a login. But it's not my login, and I can't get logged in, so somehow or another, they gotta erase that account so I could log back in again, so I could get our.
And it's really important.
Yeah, we need receipts and stuff.
So every month I'll have to go in there in the meantime and get the post, postmaster, the new lady, to print me out the thing, although when she.
But it's not letting you log in, because it says.
Says it's already, there's already a login, and I don't know what the login information is.
Yeah, we need to talk to them about that.
Yeah, the only problem is when I, it's complicated on a computer. I hate to say it like that, but that's what's been happening.
And we came up with an issue today where it was important that we had those receipts. And I was able to give Johnny a receipt of proof of delivery of something, and if their post office is giving us that receipt, those receipts, then.
By the way, I need you to check that again, because I believe you gave me the receipt for um, regular mailing.
I gave you the eight hundred and nineteen, cause there was two of them on the same day.
There's only twelve hundred and eighty-five pieces mailed. That's just the bill, that's the.
Uh, there were two mailings.
Yeah, well, this is just the bill, the bills, because that's how many accounts we have. When I send out the CCRs, it's more than just the active accounts that day.
Okay, there is another one that same day that was four hundred and nineteen dollars.
I don't know, I think it's, I think we paid for it with postage.
And then we did another one that was, well, I talked to Stephanie, Steph- Tiffany, and this is what I wrote at the time I got the receipt.
But again, twelve eighty-five is not how many CCRs we send out.
We did another mailing that came to eighty-five dollars. Would that have been the difference?
It would have been all the same. I think, I think it was paid for with postage, stamps. We usually hand, we usually hand stamp everything.
So I wouldn't have that?
Yeah, you would have it before, well, you'd have to, because it would have been bought on a credit card. I would have bought rolls of stamps.
I would have had rolls of stamps, but that doesn't tell me what's being.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
What matters is just that I showed them that before the date that she's requesting, because when I certify that I mailed it on eight twenty-eight, it can't be four days after that.
Yeah, this is showing eight thirty-one was the mailing date, and there was two mailings on that date.
Anyway, I need whatever you got on.
Okay, so that's another special mailing then we did?
Uh, it would have to be, again, because we don't mail only, we don't mail CCRs only to the bills. We mail them to owners and tenants or whoever, so anyway, whatever you got.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we're necessarily required to show that proof anyway, but to catch you guys up on it, somebody came up and said that they're suing their landlord uh, because she felt like uh, he waited five months to give her, her copy of the CCR. So she wants proof that the CCR was mailed on the date that I certified it, but that certification that I filed with the state should be plenty sufficient for her, because that's certifying that I turned it in, and it was put on the website and posted in the, the library at the time, so.
But it's on the website, she should.
So that's what we're talking about.
I mean, she should be able to get on.
You guys know her too.
She, okay, but she can go on the website to get the CCR. She does.
That's what I told her.
What's the CCR?
That's, that's the water quality report yearly, that you get from the year, year before.
So anyway, that's what we're talking about, so.
So I'm at postal, current balance, Johnny, and that's why I submitted a check for five hundred dollars for the permit this month. Cause we're low, we need, we're gonna have mailing at the end of the month.
Well, what do we normally, uh, we're, we're, we're what, about seven hundred dollars a month on, on postage, or?
No, it's just under five hundred. It's about four thirty, four fifty, between four, four, between four twenty and four fifty.
But we pay five each, it's probably something.
Yeah.
Or we leave it in reserve.
Yeah, so, and we, we're always trying to make sure we had at least, you know, seven hundred dollars in.
But this one shows four, fourteen hundred and eighty-three on, on, on the balance sheet for pre, for postage, prepaid postage.
Right, I haven't made the adjustment, cause I got this after I'd already done that, so. And I'll, with, with the year end, I will go down and get another balance before, you know, around June twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and then I'll ma- adjust it to that balance.
Okay, no problem.
For year end. Um.
Chris, ask a question. Were you able to review from last month when we, when we approved the credit card without having the invoices you reviewed and signed?
I reviewed it when I came in and signed the.
No, I just wanted to double check. Okay.
And then, um, there was one other thing I wanted to. Uh, on the check for the postal, it's five hundred and seventy-two. Five hundred's for the meter and seventy-two is for the annual yield box fee.
Oh, okay.
So it has to be handled.
What is, what is this bad debt loss, uh, bad debt loss of seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Are you, uh, you're looking in the wrong color. That was last year.
No, I'm looking at the balance sheet for May thirty-first, under, under other current assets. It says account number twelve nine nine nine. I'm just asking questions.
Oh, that is, kept it at that, they adjust that every year.
Okay.
Last two years they've left it at the.
Same rate.
Same amount, right.
Okay. And that's basically saying that, that we're not recovering money from somebody who hasn't paid.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. I see we did a new inventory.
Yeah, that inventory is getting better and better every year.
That's supposed to be a committee.
So source of supply, that's the water. Is that, is that the water that we provide? Uh, fourteen oh one four?
Oh, you're looking at the balance sheet.
Yeah, I'm looking at the balance sheet. I'm just, I'm just asking questions. I like to learn something.
This never got redone. That's what we're supposed to be doing.
All of that stuff, that's, you know, part of the inventory, the structures and all that. Um, and I think those are the final figures um, after our last meeting, you know, with the auditors.
Yeah, because we haven't liked, because we have to look at that list to see how, how it needs to be updated.
So, and they've been reviewing that every year, and it's been cleaned up, more cleaned up every year.
Yeah, okay. That's one of our ad hoc committees that we haven't done yet. Okay.
It's weird.
How does this sound for now?
Yeah, it's a pop-up.
Oh, I see, yeah. Not used to doing that.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Okay, um, I make a motion, um, that we, we pay our bills. Aye.
Motion carried.
And for your information, I know it wasn't on, on the A, A, agenda, at least I didn't see it, um.
Everything through the end of May, yeah, I see that there, yeah.
Based on that, I also.
So we're just missing the, the year end, but this is for us to start looking at the budget.
Right.
We're only missing June.
June, right.
Yeah, so, uh, this is just big, you know, so that we, hopefully we could have, you know, normal year's advice this to start looking at and considering.
Uh, I, speaking of that, we need to go back on the agenda when we're done with this, because even though we agreed to put Brahma on the ad hoc, that was an actual motion, and we need to um, re-vote, but we can't, because we're missing a board member. Shouldn't be voting. We should be abstaining from the vote. So we need to put that on the agenda just before I forget, for, um, we're gonna have to move forward, because we need to look at the budget, but it needs to be voted on at our next regular meeting, or in our next meeting, we have it on the agenda.
Yeah, because you're just changing it from Rebecca to me, you know.
But it was a motion.
Right, no, I understand.
Okay, and then this is alternative options for paying bills.
Uh, what number is that?
Page eight.
Uh, no, she ain't got anything to say about that, so somebody else must have asked her to put that on the agenda.
Where do you see that?
Eight, eight.
Where are you looking at?
Oh, we're going back, because we.
Oh.
Yeah, because we're doing financials now.
Alternative options for paying bills.
The only thing I could think of is, um, that there, it is getting more and more, just, you know, thinking about it will happen sooner than later. It could take two to five years, maybe a little longer.
That's what it was, that, that.
So it's just, you know, thinking about it, it's, it's getting to the point, and I, it, it's gonna take a while for government aid to get on board, I guess, because, you know.
Yeah, but we're not there yet, and we have to change our bylaws, so I think imminent thing looming on the horizon and the.
It'll ever be totally checked for you simply because of the oversight.
Right.
The necessary oversight, so. But for a lot of things, like utility bills and stuff like that, it's just gonna be a cost to building business to pay the labor fee, because they've deliberately manipulated it, so you don't have time to.
Now, do we have time to send this uh, bank card center out, or do I need to take it to the bank tomorrow?
Uh, we can look at the due date.
That's what I thought this, this, paying the options was for the bank card.
Where, where's the?
Here it is.
The copy?
Uh, it's in here.
Let me look at what it says. It's due June twenty-fifth, so we're okay.
Okay, but then we need to correct, correct this, however it's.
That's their envelope. That's theirs. That's the way they have it. That's their envelope and their stamp. I think they're just making sure that the zip code's showing.
Yeah, it does, okay.
Yeah, I looked at that, and well, it's their envelope, it's their label.
Bless you.
Okay.
Where'd that come from?
Tried going on the opinion?
I agree first.
At this point, I don't think, I don't, I don't know what we would do, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Uh, Tiffany and other banks will do the alternative.
That's actually the next.
That's the next.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the next one.
Can't find anybody that'll do it for a public entity at all, because Evergreen or whatever that name of that company, they were bought out by another company, and they don't do public entities either.
Do you want me to read, do you want me to read what she wrote?
Yes.
Last meeting, I reported that Everbank was the only online bank that had options for business CDs. Since then, Everbank was bought out by TIAA Bank and does not have an option for businesses that deal with public funds. I believe the only choice now is to look into banks that have branches in Bakersfield and see what rates they offer.
Yeah, like.
I can look into it and report on it next month.
Yeah, Brick and, well, she was talking about, I talked to her earlier, I was in here, is, which we're not gonna get that much on the return, but, but I think, I still think that, that breaking up some of the money into different banks still gives us the federally insured money, which protects us in case of some financial meltdown that happens.
That's on the C, that's on the CDs, but what about on money, the money market accounts? Or the regular account? All accounts?
All I know is what she wrote.
Okay, cause she wrote CDs.
Yeah.
So it may be that we can do some of the other stuff, we just can't do the CD rate.
Back on the agenda for next month.
I agree.
Have her, uh, but would you, in the meantime, because she's gonna do the minutes, would you also like her to look into?
Yes, she should do both.
If Tiffany could please do that? I mean, she's gonna take the minutes, so she's gonna figure.
If we're looking at uh, brick and mortar places, we should look and see if credit unions are able to, you know, probably be a higher yield.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, like I said, my, my main concern is, is that we're federally insured for the two hundred thousand. I don't know during the crisis, I think they, now we have all our eggs in one basket, and I, I really um, would prefer to have some of our money in some other institutions to make sure we're covered.
And before we change that, we need to know at what level, because they constantly assess us.
Right.
At California Bank and Trust, at what level do they start charging us fees on stuff too? Because if we go too low, yeah, then they may start charging us.
But it, but depending upon the amount that they're gonna charge us, it might be, it might behoove us, that's kind of what the charges are, it can't be that much. I mean, over the long term, um, to have the peace of mind and protection, I think it's, it's really important.
Uh, I can only base it on another client that I have that has similar funding that you guys have. And they um, split everything up, just like you, you're recommending, which I totally agree with. Uh, they're paying in fees now between two and three hundred dollars a month. Now, whether that will be comparable with CBT, I don't know. But because they took money out, they no longer qualify for the.
Well, that's a lot every month, right?
Yeah, but he, you know, he's made a good point. It's like insurance, you know, so.
Yeah, but that's a big problem, cause it's not enough, I don't know. That's the whole point of, of them doing a, a count, the way that they do it, is that they're, they're assuring the government that they have enough money to cover the businesses that have, that aren't FDIC, so I, I mean, I don't know. I don't know.
I, I guess my biggest concern is because they, they just repealed in Congress the dot frank, which allows banks to, to do, uh, they don't have the oversight and the, and also the amount of money that they have to keep in the banks, you know? Um, they, they've done away with those regulations now, and that was what brought on the crisis in two thousand and eight, so. I mean, I'm not an expert on this, but, but I'm just, I'm just trying to, I mean, I think we still need to look into it.
Well, we're gonna have to talk about all this stuff next month anyway, when we have more information, right?
Yeah, and if that's the case, then we should be moving our money into banks that don't charge a fee for, I mean, then we'd really have to split it up and move it into checking accounts that don't charge you a certain amount of money. Checking account, and it would all get split up into different accounts and different banks.
These are free signature.
Cause there are banks that don't charge for.
And don't sign your.
CDs, so that's, you know.
Right.
So.
Just don't sign your.
Yeah, cause two to three hundred dollars is ridiculous, and why are you even bothering getting?
And that would be for checking accounts, not for CDs.
Yeah, well, obviously, yeah, CDs shouldn't charge, but savings accounts can charge too, and it depends on how many times you take stuff out and all that.
Well, I do know that of the.
Online?
The uh, brick and mortar that I went to, that was a um, a credit union, and Linda's check.
Here it is, Linda.
Did I, uh? Did you find any corrections?
I didn't, but I'm sure.
Director Schumberg, did you find?
Okay, so, on page one, number two, it's just a dumb thing, throughout is capitalized, it should be not capitalized.
Capitalized?
No, throughout.
Throughout should not be.
Replacement water main lines, throughout should be a, a small team.
And that was the only thing that I noticed, and I would like to move, unless someone else has other typos, that we approve the minutes for Thursday, May tenth, twenty eighteen, with the amendments given, with the amendment given, and with the possibility for.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Four zero one. Okay, discussion, uh, vote on future agenda items?
So we just need to make sure that that ad hoc, um, vote is on the agenda.
Oh, in the minutes? Um, Tiffany asked that you sign them. You signed the minutes?
I signed the minutes, but I signed, I'm the secretary.
Oh, yeah, oh, you signed, yeah, whoever signed it, and then give it to her, so.
It's, I gave it to you. It's with the other, it's in the same manila folder that the thing that.
Go ahead, put that, put that on our desk.
Director Kellerman had to sign.
Cool, thank you.
So, that's the only thing that I can um.
So discuss work.
So the um, ad hoc committee needs to be on there from the budget change.
A vote, yeah.
Vote, vote, and then uh, and the banking.
We're just gonna carry over the same stuff, I mean.
Yeah, but there's no vote, so it needs to be written vote on the, on the ad hoc committee for the budget committee. You can't just say budget committee, it needs to be discussion vote.
Meeting agenda too?
Yes, yes.
Is that it?
So it is.
Um, I don't feel like we need one as of yet, because nothing's being done. Um, but potentially, when I get hold of Dave and find out what's going on, then I could let you know, and we could discuss that at the next regular meeting.
I mean.
There's not gonna be one, this one's for sure. There's nothing gonna happen for a second meeting this month.
Are you, you're talking for, for July?
I think she actually asked for June, to see if we were gonna do one in two weeks, but there's nothing to do in two weeks, so.
Yeah, no, I don't.
But are we, but we're not hearing from anybody or on anything.
Cause nothing was happening until money gets signed. There's no money to be spent.
But there is a big issue, because the big issue is this whole church thing. I, I'd like to hear like from the state or something about that.
Well, I, I just have to talk to Dave. I tried to call Dave. I gotta call Dave again and find out, because Carlos said, he didn't say that Dave was dead, he just made that comment to me, so obviously he, they forgot all about the prior meetings, like I said. So I'll talk to Dave, and then I'll let you guys know. I'll email Dave and include you in it, so you see what's going on.
Okay, and I wanna make sure that we're doing the, that accurately, because theoretically, because it's a regular meeting in our bylaws and everywhere else, we have directors showing up, and I think you still call the meeting. Actually, we don't, you can't just cancel a meeting like that. If it's a regular meeting, you can't, if it's a special meeting, you cannot have that, but.
Well, for sure, the state, if we have the meeting and there's nothing to be covered, the state can reimburse us for the money, because they only reimburse us for things happening, so that's why.
Talking about the other stuff we need to talk about, so why don't we use it for the budget?
Well, again, because there's not, you, we ain't gonna be reimbursed for it, and we don't really need a second meeting just for the budget, right? We wouldn't be reimbursed for the second meeting. It would only be for the budget. And if we need a second meeting for a budget, then.
Well, what I'm saying is, it's a regular meeting, it's not just.
Well, she's gonna check on it and then we'll let you know, it's another thing. I mean, if I had to, I'd just stay here till six and then just cancel it, like you just said, our policy. Pay an extra hour and cancel it. So there's no reason to spend five hundred dollars on a meeting if, unless there's something to cover. Who knows? Self-help may tell me, yeah, well, we got some invoices now, something we need to do, so I'll, I'll check on Monday, and then I'll let you guys know for sure.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we.
Depending on how much stuff there is, but there's probably not that much stuff.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Fall in favor?
Aye.